Good evening. The regular meeting of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education is called to order. It is 7 o'clock PM on Tuesday, February 20th. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and silence your cellphones. I'd also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board, read the visitor guidelines, which are on the table right outside the door, and complete the attached public participation form and take those over to Joey. Public participation is only allowed during the public participation portions of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Roll call, please. Lamb?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Severn's? Rock?
Here.
McComb?
Here.
Bannister?
Here.
McMurray? Here. We are excited that students from Middletown Prairie are going to lead us in the fight. So let's see.
........................................................................
Tonight's building spotlight is Middletown Prairie. We would like to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. Do you have anything that you want to share? Hold on, I think we've got some slides. Basically, you don't have to talk for a long time. So do you want to stand? You have a question? We can all come up here. You're more than welcome. This is more about you guys than me. All right. So these are a few of our MPE little holdoffs, but our MPE spotlight is on our BLAST program that's grown significantly at MPE. And Mr. Mark is coaching basketball right now. He would be the one presenting on all of this. But I am the district BLAST coordinator. And Mrs. Truax is our building BLAST coordinator.
Yes.
And so would you hit our next slide for a second for us? So this year in MPE, we have only done three of our four sessions. In our fourth session, we get to invite our kindergarteners to before. Did any of you get to do this at kindergarten? Did you get to come? I thought so, possibly. Well, so far, we've done 28 classes and we've had 433 just first and second graders participate. It's the largest amount of BLAST we've had ever. It's historical. And this is just our building. So that is all I'm going to say about it because Mr. Truax can talk about our building specifically. And then these guys, I think, have something to share as well.
So I think that we've got a good collection of kids who have done a lot of our BLAST classes. And I can't do it without them. Mr. Thad here helps me set up my boxes for snacks every day after school. It's really helpful right there. But I think they all can share a little something about what their favorite thing about BLAST is. Kennedy, you want to go first? What's your favorite thing about BLAST?
When you tell us your name.
Oh, yeah. Yes. So just say your name.
Two more.
And then you can tell us your favorite thing about BLAST. There you go.
My name is Kennedy. And my favorite thing about BLAST was that I learned new things about it.
Very cool. All right. Next.
My name is Eli. And I like BLAST because I get to learn new things that I didn't know. And I get to do a lot of fun games and things that I didn't know that I could do.
Which class class did you take?
Yeah, I'm going to say.
Do you remember what the name of the class?
I did jump roping and speed stacking.
Nice.
Yeah, you could share your favorite class you've ever taken. If you'll do that.
Yeah. I'm not.
I enjoy.
Okay, you're okay. You're okay.
I enjoy jump roping.
Yeah? Are you pretty good at it?
Good at it.
You too?
My name's Jonathan. I like that you would learn something pretty much every class.
What class did you do?
This year, I did speed stacking.
Very nice. Have you done? What other classes have you done? Just name like two or three.
Kitchen basics. And.
Stew. So that's a new class lesson.
I'm Emily. My favorite thing about BLAST is because I learn new things every time and I meet new friends.
Just lots of new people in there, right? It's your only time with like first and second grade missing.
Yeah.
Evening, sir.
Kitchen.
Kitchen.
Kitchen basics.
Do you have a favorite recipe at all from Kitchen Basics? I see you brought a couple. It's okay if you don't. Is it that one? What's that one called? A breakfast banana split. Have you cast it around?
Would you?
Yeah. So this is a pretty impressive list of dioceses that you've met. But I've talked to a few parents around and they're excited their kiddos can now cook them.
They're excited.
I am all about kids.
Breakfast.
Yeah, this is perfect. So kids cooking or, I don't know, was it always called Kitchen Basics?
Yeah.
Even if it keeps the name up a little bit.
Like even when my big kids were little, they did that. And we still have their recipe books. So one day, we'll also. Breakfast banana splits when you're like 16. Seriously, I'm going to take a picture of this.
We should tell them.
Tell them. Tell them. I'm ready.
What do you guys think? Do you guys think you'll do BLAST again?
So we have a second graders here. Can you raise your hand if you're in second grade? So I thought, do you guys know they have BLAST at LT too? So next year, with their complete. You'll get to keep doing different ones.
My favorite is something.
Pretty cool. And then the ones who are in first grade, you'll get some new ones next year too. It's pretty neat. Right. So do you think else guys want to come up with BLAST?
Um.
It's okay if not. Just make sure.
Do you like the snacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Truax takes out some really good snacks. I see pools go down.
Yep. Well, do you think that's our spotlight, boys and girls?
Yeah.
All right. We did great. Ladies, great. And teachers, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Lots of snack organizations.
We're looking for volunteers that want to pass out snacks. All things.
About passing out. Yeah. Oh, that's.
Always a highlight. All right. So. The next item is approval of the agenda. You've had a chance to flip over the agenda for anything you would like to move around or.
I have no idea what that is. So sorry.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. McComb?
Yes.
Severn's? Lamb?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McMurray? Yes. The agenda is approved. The next item is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes from the open and closed sessions of December 18th, minutes from the open sessions of January 18th, January 16th, minutes for closed session on January 16th, minutes for our joint village and board meeting on February 20th. Bills is presented. Treasures reported presented. Personnel changes as presented. Surplus items out of state slash overnight trips. And the CTE comprehensive needs assessment. Does anybody want to pull anything out to talk about separately? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. And any discussion? All right. Roll call, please. Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Severn's? McComb?
Yes.
McLern? Yes. We have another incredible donation list today. Dr. Lee?
Yes. Many donations this month. One from Robert Lynn Amy Bain to the Give Me Five Food Program. The amount of $500. Lemonade for Leah donated to the Compass Classroom Lincoln Trail in the amount of $997.23. An anonymous donation to the softball program at the high school in the amount of $2,000. The Bertha and Hopper Memorial Foundation donated money to Lincoln Trail for third grade tablets in the amount of $4,520. Southeastern, the Southeastern Illinois Community Foundation donated money to, for the district use earmarked for Lincoln Trail playground equipment in the amount of $5,000. Our generous education foundation donated to the high school for sound system in the Commons of $10,000, to Lincoln Trail for playground equipment in the amount of $10,500, and to the junior high school for the sound system for the Orange Gym in the amount of $12,000. So I did note that those donations from the education foundation were quotes. So that may be approximate, but they'll all be within, right, 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 within that number. And for a total of $45,572.23 in donations.
Impressive. Thank you. Can we get a motion to your committee?
So.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Can we do roll call, please? Severn's? Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McMurray? Yes. Thank you to everyone for those donations. Anybody from KTO tonight? MSO? Foundation?
Yeah, just a quick update reminder that the Muhammad Seymour Education Foundation bash is coming up soon. It is Friday, April 5th. It's going to be a Carmen's and champagne again. It's going to be a great night of food, fun, and lots of auction items and prizes. And as we just heard in the donation update that the Muhammad Seymour Education Foundation made some big donations this month. And that's, that's what the foundation does. That's putting money back into our schools, supplementing anywhere that needs, has any extra needs and stuff. So we look forward to seeing you on April 5th. If you want to purchase your tickets, it can be done on the foundation's Facebook page or you can reach out to me and consider it in the right direction.
And we have two visitors tonight. Jay is going to come up first. And you'll have three minutes. So come on up. So if you've read off three minutes, I'll try to give you a heads up when you arrive.
All right. All right. Good evening. My name is Jay. And I'm the president here at the Muhammad Seymour FFA chapter. FFA is a student-led organization that allows students to learn about topics in agriculture, build their leadership skills, meet new people, and impact their communities. In FFA, we participate in many events, including community service activities, competitions, leadership conferences, and much, much more. FFA is a great way to get involved in your school and community and meet people from other schools. Each year, we have an annual pie auction fundraiser, which raises money so we can send kids to state and national conventions, competitions, and then the other activities that we do in FFA. This is our only fundraising event that we have throughout the year. So for those people from our community, they'll bring in pies typically, but sometimes any other desserts. And these will be auctioned off. This year, the auction is going to be held on March 3rd at 4:30 in the Commons. That's the first Sunday in March. The doors, like I said, the doors will open at 4:30. So if you are interested in coming, if you know a student involved in FFA, you can buy tickets from them or you can just come and buy tickets at the door. Those will be $10 each. With that ticket, it will get you a pulled pork meal from Bourbon Smoke Barbecue, which is great food with the auction to follow. And then, so we'll have the meal and then afterwards, we'll have the auction, auction off all the great pies and desserts. So thank you, guys, and come on out and support us at the auction. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any more time?
Yes, I do have some.
Okay. All right. Jay.
So hi, my name is Jay McCray. I'm the Muhammad Seymour FFA's vice president. And like Cooper said, we are a student-led organization. And this week is a special week for FFA because it's National FFA Week. And our students and officer team planned a whole week full of FFA fun, basically, to bring awareness to FFA and what it's all about. So last night, we kicked it off with having a barbecue meet and greet. We had FFA members, alumni, and supporters out to just socialize and get to know each other. Today, we hosted a pork chop lunch for students and staff in the high school. That was sponsored by United Prairie. So they came out and grilled pork chops for all of us. And all week, all week long, we're doing a food drive. All the proceeds are going to Mom's pantry. And we are actually competing with schools in the surrounding areas. So whoever brings in the most food to their selected food pantry wins $500 towards their FFA chapter. And we get $250 for participating. And we are also doing like a little FFA emblem scavenger hunt. So if kids find an FFA emblem around the high school, they can bring it back to Mrs. Worley or Mr. Meisner and get a little prize. And then we have like spirit days for each day this week. And then one of our big competitions that just recently happened was proficiency awards. So kids compete in that contest with their supervised agriculture experience, also known as an SAE. So Muhammad had five kids compete. Jack Jessup competed in turf and grass management category. And he owns his own lawn care and landscaping business. Taylor Mills competed in arts and communication. And she owns her own bracelet making business. Callie Turner competed in poultry production. She has her own chickens that she takes care of. Addie Legacy competed in specialty crop production. And she grows her own popcorn. And I competed in food service. And I work at Yo-Yo's, so I log my hours and pages from there. Luckily, we, all five of us, won our areas. So we advanced to districts. That is March 6th in Mount Zion. I am also in the running to get my state degree, which is the highest FFA degree you can get in the state. And Taylor Deeds, who graduated last year, who is now an alumni, is in the running to get her American FFA degree. So you can keep up with all of our competitions and events coming up in our chapter at our Facebook page, which is just Muhammad Seymour. And yeah, thank you, guys, for your time and everything you do for our schools.
Thank you.
Next question. Is your annual fundraiser always the first Sunday in March? It has been for the past couple of years. Okay. So that's not a sad thing. Sure.
I didn't know why I took a shit. I don't have.
Probably gone. Yeah, I do have tickets. You could probably still buy a ticket and pass it on to the neighborhood. What? I'd say about you, Dave.
But no pressure.
So there's. My favorite six. Fair enough.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you want, but.
When, you know, prison people or FFA, we, they would have people if our, like, track tracks. Outside. We don't have that. Not in there. There'd be like all sorts of tracks.
Yeah.
It's pretty neat. Yep.
We park.
Parking crisis. Four-wheel driving.
All right. Let's move on to board communication. Do you have anything? Who wants to? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll start.
Great.
Couple of people I really want to recognize that I think it's very rare in this day and age to have trailblazers as students. And Ms. Leahy, who is on the wrestling team, really is a trailblazer. She is a real inspiration. Those of you who don't know who she is, she's a senior wrestler. And to go out and wrestle, I did not participate in wrestling. My son does. I've learned more about that sport. And there's a saying, once you wrestle, everything else is easier. And I really believe that. And she has fought. She's the first female wrestler in decades. She's the first to win a tournament. She has many accolades. And we should all tip our hat to her for being a female in a male-dominated world. She did not back down. I've seen that girl be injured, not give up, come back. And she has more grit and determination in her than many of us do in our entire bodies. So tip my hat to her. She deserves a round of applause. A real, real trailblazer. And then tip my hat to Chad Benedict, Ryan Martin, and our assistant principal from the high school for stepping up and serving our young ladies on the high school basketball team when they needed it and needed it the most and real testaments to their leadership. Congratulations. They're playing right now and hopefully they can pull that off. You're welcome.
Couple of quick things. Mrs. Hunter, principal at Lincoln Trail, won Principal of the Year. That's a distinction, I guess, given by the Illinois Principals Association. She won it as a representative from the Linei region. And I also wanted to shout out some of the LT teachers and staff that took the polar plunge on a really cold day last Saturday, obviously raising awareness. And I assume money for Illinois Special Olympics. So good, a lot of good people who are well-deserving of sunshine in that building.
One thing I love about this group is you guys all hit some of the same topics that we were going to hit. So kind of like.
Go ahead first.
Yeah. Kind of like-minded. Again, you were talking about Marissa Franks. Was that Marissa Franks? I was just blown away with how they turned a situation that was just kind of spinning out of control. They regained that and just showed a tremendous amount of leadership. And they showed those, that team and those girls, like, we can still do this. And it's pretty awesome that they succeeded in our, our movement forward. So again, tip your hat to them as well as Mrs. Hunter. I also wanted to highlight the facility committee meeting that we had this past Tuesday. That was awesome to see so many community members there, staff, just everyone that was so energized and excited to give up two or three hours of their Tuesday evening to, you know, polarize this community. Just really excited to see what the community and stakeholders bring back to us as a board. So excited for that process to play out.
Oh, we look at me now. I have a kind of joke in the comedy the last several years. We keep finding basketball coaches to promote and make administrators. How that, you know, was around basketball coaches. But it certainly paid off huge dividends here recently. And I appreciate that whole group and what they've done to help get the girls team successful. It's, it's just great to see that. And yeah, playing tonight, very cool. I was also there last week when we did the facilities committee meeting. It was great to see, although the folks had a great amount of energy, the group was pretty electric. All the participants worked a lot in small groups, took the assignments very serious. I know I've seen emails with questions and more information going out. And appreciate every single one of them diving into an area where there's, basically, there's not a lot of great answers for it. If there was an easy solution, we'd, we'd have that already. So sure appreciate them doing that. And that's what I bet.
Yeah. I mean, things I was going to say have already been said. But again, I just want to touch on what Chad Benedict, Ryan Martin, and Marissa Franks have done. They've just gone completely above and beyond the call of duty and making that sacrifice without hesitation for these girls. So just so thankful for them, what they've done. And hopefully, they mount a big fourth quarter comeback because I think they're down right now. But also like to congratulate the boys wrestling team. They won their sectional event tonight, so they're advancing to state this weekend. Also, like Jeff said, the girls wrestling team is going to be, individuals are going to be competing in state. Is he like, he was that pioneer that got this girls program off the ground? And I think there's four girls competing this weekend in state. So it's awesome. Boys swimming are competing this weekend as well. So there's lots going on. Just so much success and so thankful for these programs that give these kids the opportunity. Times. So thank you to everyone.
Like kept crossing things off, like, okay, that's been said, that's been said. So I only have two things left that haven't been said yet. So I want to echo all of, all of those things. I'm glad somebody brought up swimming because that's near and dear to my heart. And I'm just, our swim program is so fantastic. And I'm so impressed by the fact that we don't have a pool and yet our swimmers are dominating in the water. So that's amazing. Anyway, two things I wanted to say thank you to the village for joining us and having that joint conversation. I feel like now we are all kind of on the same page. And we are looking toward a main goal and realizing that in working together, we're really going to do more things and better things for our community. So I appreciated that, that shared, shared space with them. And I also, I love our school's spotlights. When, I mean, I, those kids were adorable. The matricals, like, they made me cry. Like, I mean, just the incredible staff and students that we have here. Just, I'm so glad that we do those. And I'm so glad that that is what our focus is to start a business meeting to say, hey, this is, this is why we're here. So thank you to the administrators and the teachers and the families who are making that happen. Because I know that's not an easy, like, oh, just pop into board meeting. Like, that takes a lot of work. That spotlight took a lot of work. So thank you to everybody. Thank you for letting them come in. Okay. We'll do. Go ahead, Max.
You know, tonight, we talked about a lot of kind of cool things that weren't around 10 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Girls for us.
Swimming.
Swimming. Tonight, I drove by Middletown Park, Village of Muhammad, Mobile, Muhammad, Seymour tennis, right?
Yeah.
There was no tennis 10 years ago. And, you know, our, our facilities group struggling with options, right? Trying to come up with a plan. There's the village meeting, we talked about growth, how growth, you know, there's problems associated with growth, right? But not everything about growth is negative. There's a whole lot more fun than bad things when there's the tough ones. And a lot of these things we mentioned tonight, they weren't around 10 years ago. And so I just kind of wanted to point that out. A lot of neat people do a lot of, the growth of FFA has been tremendous. And so there's a lot of things that didn't used to, we didn't used to have, and we now have. And some of that's been made possible by some of the growth and people stepping up and not being afraid to try new things and stuff. I just want to point that out.
Straight point. Okay. Let's jump into financial updates. Do you have anything to add, Heather?
No, we're right on track with our revenue and expenses. We have some one-time expenses that kind of bump it up a little bit more for this year. But as you know, we'll get our rest per property taxes towards the end of the year. So our revenue will, the percentage will start going down until it goes back up in May and June, as long as we get our payments.
Any questions, Heather? Mr. Rock? You good?
I'm good. I was just, I was marveling at how close the percentages were between budget spent and budget collected. 62.14 to 62.22. That's, that's, I don't know if that's skill. It's probably luck, but it's. Skill.
Skill. Skill, alright, well done.
Uh, Christine Thrapp, do you have anything to add to your report?
No.
Questions for Christine? That one made for Leah, I think, was cool.
Very cool, they look very tasty.
Yeah, that's cool. Okay, and Dr. Bagby had her report in there. Anything you want to add, Dr. Bagby?
Nothing to add, that report, unless there's any questions.
I just want to give a kudos to our teachers who are moving a shift in their in long-held practices. And that is hard to do and and they're doing it and it's for your rest.
I appreciate your approach with numbers and how you quantify things. I just appreciate you adding that to it, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, any other questions? Fantastic. Dr. Lee?
Included in mine, just a a couple of things to note as we move into the spring. Our handbook revision timeline as far as staffing for for next year timeline that we're looking at. We'll meet with as a principal group tomorrow morning and and Heather will talk about the financial piece of that as she forecasts what it will look like for next year as well. So we're in the thick of that.
Any questions for Dr. Leah? Very good. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, so let's move into new business. Item one, Skyward Student Financial Systems Renewal. Skyward has come to us with a three-year renewal. Skyward is something that has been in this district since about 2013. It is in, it might be in most districts in Illinois at least. The three-year renewal is for 3.58% for the first year with no increases for the next two years. If we go, if we do not do that, then we would see a 13.94% for this year or this coming year. And then we would not know what was in the next two years. We have no expectation of leaving Skyward. Actually, the next step will be going to their new platform, platform, which will be cumulative. So that's something that a lot of school districts have already gone to. So that is something that we will be proceeding with as well. And Dr. Lee asked me to figure out, you know, based off of our current enrollment and with a 3.58% increase to just kind of see where that would be, that would lead us. This last, this year we paid $75,439. This would increase us to $82,289.69 for a total increase of $6,849, which would be for the first year and then it would stay steady going forward. I did look, the last few years it has stayed steady, so we must have had something similar. We briefly talked, we've talked before about Skyward and they're gonna move to this new system. Are we spending money on anything else? I'm trying to ask this clearly. Is there a more comprehensive program that would include everything that Skyward has as well as anything else that we're already spending money on that we could move to? And if there is, would that be a good idea?
Well, actually, we have looked at things like that and what that Skyward's capable of doing. Like when we adopted the frontline, the first thing we did was actually go to Skyward and see what they had.
That's what I was.
Just thinking.
Okay, that's what it was. It just they couldn't, it did not.
And that was in HR forums, right?
Yes, yes.
Will that do, Kim Monson, will that work together better with frontline?
I do not know at this point, you know, what you don't have. Right now, though, I mean, we can, you know, actually put the data in and it it speaks to each other, what they call it SIP compliant, but it's just that it does not, it's not part of the system. We also have Skylert, which is actually Skyward as well, which is separate from this.
It is.
It's separate from this renewal. They have a separate renewal for that. It's a lot less money.
Okay.
I'm recommending that we do the three-year, obviously.
Can I sound in tune with when I have a question? Yeah.
You're very facially expressive.
I'll work on that.
Why? It's helpful.
No, I'm just gonna show my cards, hey.
You're trying to do the next one.
Bring my checkbook. I don't have a checkbook. We don't have that one.
Uh, Jordan, do you want to add, you want to ask?
Yes, I do. I've never used Skyward, so looking to maybe parents on the board, anybody in the district. It's a very simple question. Could we make it, is it easy to use? Are there any complaints that we should consider before we?
Have a great question. Um, as a parent, I wish I could log in. My wife handles it, so, but there's, you know, that's the only issue I have, like duplicate. But it's not an issue, so I'd never ask or I'd never even deal with it. But as far as a family, it's super easy.
Yes, okay.
I I agree.
Yeah, I mean.
It's pretty easy to use.
What's what's the downside? I mean, I know we're locking in longer, but it seems cheaper and.
And we don't see us moving from editing.
So like, it's holding children accountable, it's awesome. And it's.
You're supposed to do that, but.
But it just makes that job a lot easier. I know, I don't have a negative thing to say about it.
We did ask about, you know, what would happen if we did go to Q and the pricing and the pricing will stay the same, so.
I like the idea of locking in a certain.
Um, except for the probation, three-year commitment.
Okay, may I get a second?
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call over that please. Rock?
Yes.
Name?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Anister?
Yes.
Severance, Rick Moran? Yes, all right. Item two, health life safety amendments for Lincoln Trail roof and MSHS controls.
Yes, hi Heather, hello. This, I need approval from the board to proceed with doing an amendment to our health life safety plan. Basically, our health life safety plan is done every 10 years, but as we see things that need to be added, we can add that. Alls it does is it makes it possible for us to use that as a funding source, our health life safety funds. So we need to get them approved before we can do that. Just like, and then as you can see, this 969,000, it would actually help us use some type of health life safety funds if we, to offset the total cost of the controls. So and then I have another $400,000 in the S or G. So, you know, it'll help take money off of the district's expenses. So that's that's what we'd like to do is right now, we're just trying to get them approved. The Lincoln Trail, it's just four sections. This is the pri, the second priority. We already did the first priority this last year, this last summer. So there's four sections of Lincoln Trails that are the next priority. We have a list all the way to 2025. At that time, we'll probably have to do another assessment. But the third priority will be five sections at the high school and then we have a last priority, which is the junior high. Four sections at the high school and one more at LT. So eventually, hopefully, we'll get everything up to date. This, the second priority is all 20-year fluids, so it's not actually a new roof, but actually applying, I am not an expert with this, but applying a fluid that will basically keep it, make it work for another 20 years.
So are we approving the go forward with this work or are we approving the ability to add to that bucket?
That's a great question.
Yep.
Yes.
It's been health life safety that's been come out of operating.
Yes.
Are you the one that's filling out the the forms or?
The architect fills out some of the forms and then I figure I fill out the district forms. And then, of course, Dr. Lee also, I think, has to sign off on part of it as well.
I have until approval tomorrow. Part of the problem is the lead time to get it approved of health life safety. You need to start the process early, then you don't get approval and categorize it as health life safety. And if we have other ways to fund it or not.
If we need to do the controls, I'll need to get them done this year to get used to S or mine. So I'd like to have it in place.
Other questions? Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the health life safety amendments as presented. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you, may I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, and let's do a roll call over please. Jordan?
Yes.
McCall?
Yeah.
Anister?
Yes.
Severance, Rock?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes, and that passes. Uh, item three, approval of codes for activity buses. Um, yes, I'm sure you probably already know this. We struggle with trips on a regular basis.
That are causing you, are you missing?
Yes.
Seeing it? Uh, if you pull down and refresh.
Okay.
Would you mind it?
I'm sorry, go ahead. The FFA, they said they took five people, they took it in. Because we did not have any other transportation for them. And the problem is, is that when the one activity bus that we have is being utilized, then you have to, if you have more trips, then you have to use the big school buses. Well, of course, as you know, you have to have a certain license to be able to drive those for that fixed drivers. We have trips leaving at one, two in the afternoon. And so how do we cover the afternoon routes, basically? And so, I mean, there's been times when they've had to maneuver quite a bit. I did talk to the principals and the athletic directors just to see if this would be helpful. Of course, it would be, you know, to help with their frustrations as well, just getting people places and not having to rely as much on the school buses. We also, as you probably remember, we rent out the Macy bus, we still may need to do that. But what I provided here is to actually run, or not the same lease, but lease again, another unit. And let me tell you, these things are very rare to find, that's why I'm doing it now. Because we looked and looked and looked for activity buses over the last year and.
Because everybody wants to do what we're doing, right?
You what?
Everybody wants to do what we're doing.
Well, everyone wants to do that and they just, they weren't making them as fast as they were selling them. So, uh, so right now, they have, this company has 20 available. Talking about doing another lease to replace the lease that we have now and then purchasing one with transportation funds that will be depreciated within the transportation report claim. But in that way, we have one and I did talk to a couple of people that will know a little bit more about buses and everything than I do. Because we also had an option to buy some of the used buses as well. But what they said was, you know, we can probably use this bus for longer than the five years, but then also we'll know the maintenance on it, so we'll know what we're dealing with and what, you know, what's, you know, when we have problems, we won't have to, when we could get a bus and have a big problem, we wouldn't know it. This way, we can continue with the bus and know what's been going on with it. So that is my recommendation.
Be in, other than the fact, are we, is he want to buy one or is there any difference in the two buses or they?
No, same bus.
Are we buying the one that we've been leasing?
No, no, that one is.
Why not?
I don't, I don't, we just were trying to get.
Me, I, I didn't mean to come up.
No.
Direct that way. It was like, you know, we know the the maintenance track record of it and it's, and if it's fine, go with that. Comes to my mind, buying a lease, buying a car after the lease is expired. Might be able to get a reasonable deal on it, is the only thing I was thinking of. If we have a track record of the maintenance.
Well, that and that risk, with the two we're buying, if someone happens to borrow a Macy bus or U-Drive or U-Drive a same bus. I I don't know that you can have too many of those these days.
That was.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would, I would say go ahead and do what you want to do with these. I I would at least ask them, I want the one we're turning in, yeah. Maybe we end up with a third. Underpass.
So can you explain again how all of this will be funded?
Um, they will be funded through the transportation fund. What it will do is the leases will be depreciated through, the claim actually depreciates purchases and the leases, the lease payments. So that goes into our funding for, you know, the the next year, because you're always doing the previous year, so then you get the funding the next year. So that would be added to our claim. So I mean, we wouldn't, we would, that would be something that we could basically get some reimbursement back for. I can't say the whole thing, but we'll get some reimbursement back. Depends on how much the state is actually paying on the depreciation or on the transportation claim.
So with the transportation budget, does it vary how much you spend year to year? Like just purchase a new school bus, like last year, we don't need to purchase one this year, so we might have some extra funds. I mean, is there?
We actually, we do all of the fleet at once. So we currently are in lease for our fleet. This would be in a, in addition to our regular fleet. So we probably have a different, you know, it'd be set up for a different time span. Because those are on a five-year lease as well.
With the lease, do they, part of that, do they cover the maintenance and everything? Like it's all done through that department or or that MTE or?
Yes, it is covered, the maintenance on the.
So like you lease a new car, you get all your oil change, that that's all.
We may use routine maintenance, but they help where you need.
Yeah.
No restrictions on that needed leases, though, as far as use goes, is there? I guess they do.
And no, not that I've seen.
So here's a question, and I probably shouldn't be answering this, I'm only asking you for reference. How many are in other vehicles from that time? I I know a while back we had a Yukon, a Mayan, we still have those.
Um, we have a, we we do have something similar to the Yukon.
It's a bourbon, yeah.
But that's the only one we have now. And we we purchased that not too long ago as well.
So you don't have to have a CDL to drive it, for anybody with a regular driver's license, I mean.
You just have to get them on our insurance and then they can drive. So that's the difference.
So it solves two issues. Use a smaller vehicle and get better fuel economy and save a bus driver.
I would, yeah, I would just like to explore, why? Especially what we're treating.
Okay. Are you, okay, to clarify, in lieu of one of these?
No, no.
In addition.
It's.
Um, okay, any more questions? Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the bid for lease and bid for purchase of two activity buses as presented. I have a motion to.
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
You and Rock Albert. Lamb?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Severance?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Anister?
Yes.
Yes. Um, item four, approval to appeal decision of the Board of Review, County Board of Appeals, Board of Others.
Yes, as you probably saw, Salus, which is other, why is known as Mohammed Investment Group, Dollar General, and Brightlebrook have all appealed their taxes. They, Brightlebrook has actually done this every year. Last year, we actually settled with them. We were on the other side, which I'll explain in a second, but we did settle with them. The, in the past, the County Board of Review has usually, actually, our attorney says he's never seen it happen this way. Usually, they, they, they agree with or go along with the tax bodies, taxing bodies. He's never seen it where they have actually decreased it this much or got towards the taxpayer. So, you know, as we have to remember, we did, last year, Brightlebrook asked us to to actually do a settlement before we went to PTAB. And we ended up doing that. We have actually settled with Brightlebrook quite a few times. And as you know, once you settle, then you're going on a lower amount. So every, you're you're just, you know, going backwards a little bit. Dollar General, they are actually, they they were actually put at a lower amount than they were last year. So when you think of something like that with everything, inflation and everything else going up, that just doesn't seem quite right.
So the Dollar General, the 336, 777 was less than the year before?
Yes.
And they appealed it to almost half.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, the 336 was not lessened, but then when they did 180, it is less than than what they paid last year with the Board of Review vote on and approved. So we did not have time to do any kind of, get any kind of assessments or appraisals ahead of time because we didn't get the notices in time, which they, of course, already have theirs available. So when our attorney went to argue, obviously, there wasn't much to argue with. But we did have time to, we do have time to get them in time for the PTAB.
Did I apparently appeal before the Board of Review?
Yes.
Physically?
Yes.
Was there?
It was all online. But.
You mean like over Zoom or something?
You what?
You mean like over Zoom or something?
Yes, yes. What they, the taxpayers said, from what I was told, is that they did not agree with the assessor's estimates. They did not agree that the multiplier should be done on anything except for residential properties, which, as we know, it should be applied to everything. It's not just residential properties. And, you know, and my issue is that is I base my levy off of the assessor's estimate. So with this, if it was to go down, it may be minimal, but that tax rate would increase. And that would actually be put out to the rest of our community. Even though it may be minimal, but I mean, that's just the whole idea of it. Even though it may be minimal, but that's just the whole idea of it. So we, all of the taxing bodies work together. So we have all agreed, except as long as you guys agree. We do head the forge just because we are the largest entity. But they participate in all of the costs and we make sure that everybody agrees that we want to move forward. And I can tell you, they want to move forward as well. So they're just waiting on a decision tonight from us so that we can proceed with the appraisals. But once we do that, then it'll go to PTAB. We have tried to settle with the, with the other taxing, with the taxpayers. But they did not want to settle. It's the opposite way this year. Since they, you know, went their way, they don't want to settle. So we, we did try to reach out to them to get something more reasonable than where they were, they were adjusted to.
So we've got somebody lined up to do the appraisal with you?
Yes, we're, yes, he, Mr. Funk has been looking into that and he's gotten some estimates. We'll have a discount on the Bridlebrook since we just did it last year. They'll just be updating it. But the rest, we will need to do.
Do you have any ideas?
You what?
Do you have any ideas?
Uh, no, I couldn't find out.
Somebody who's maybe, who's here in Champaign County, never called?
Yes, I mean, we're, we try to find somebody that, that has done these types of appraisals before. Because that was one of the taxpayers' concerns was who's going to be doing my appraisal? And it's if we usually try to find somebody that's done them before.
On the residential side, we often have issues when out of the area appraisers come in, they try to appraise here. And I don't know who some of these investment firms had to do their appraisals. But I think it's, we'll lose us to make sure we have a Champaign County appraiser. I, I understand the commercial.
There, there are several reputable, reputable firms locally. And there's a term we, we use called geographic competency. And so if you have somebody using a comparable sale from, say, Randool or another community, it, it's not the same. So I would. I, I've performed in my practice many tax appeal appraisals for individuals. And the consensus is, hey, I need this lower because I'm paying too much taxes, too much in taxes. Well, nobody wants to pay too much in taxes. I understand that. Just the same way as if you're doing a refinance, hey, I need this thing to be as high as possible so I can pull out some money and take a vacation. And, and the response that I have is, an appraisal isn't an appraisal. It's not advocating for one side or the other. So without like going through all this, you know, I don't want to speak to the validity of these reports. But the number is the number, right? So if we have a competent appraiser or firm on our behalf, I feel like we're going to come to a resolution on this. I think that we all know everything's skyrocketing out about me. It would be hard to say that things are going down, so.
Well, I guess they're, they're basing it on, they probably use an area appraiser. I don't know who they use. But I don't know what Dollar General is based off of. But they're coming in, fifty percent of them, who knows who wrote it?
I just wish there was some context in how the board came up with these numbers.
Well, in some cases, they gave them exactly what they asked for. And in other cases, they just, I mean, for some reason, it was mentioned that arguing with the multiplier, that it was not correct. Thing is, is nobody in this area besides the multiplier, that's decided by the state. We don't get to choose the multiplier. And I think that was, I think there was some confusion around some of the things that were said. I don't know if they had the knowledge at the border review to know that. I'm not saying they didn't, but I'm just saying I don't know, you know, what that was. And I don't know, it just, it all had to, it was all centered around the same thing. That some, something was not right with our assessments in general.
Can you explain the multiplier, please?
Basically, what it is, is with the growth and everything, not just in the, just not in the housing market. But they actually tell you, like, you have a five percent multiplier due to inflation or anything. I mean, I don't know if you can.
So if, if, if your, your average threshold would be like a hundred percent. Well, you'd say, hey, Mohammed's maybe out of five percent over the Champaign County as a whole. If your multiplier like one, one oh five. All right. So it's just taking into account, like, instead of like the big picture, you're a little bit more.
Next to get to.
That, that community or even to that neighborhood. It's like a multiplier to get from assessed value in one year to assessed value the next year. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it, it affects, it affects the, the amount that it goes up. So basically the, that. That was part of the eleven point four six.
The county, they have a tough job, right? Like, did you like one appraisal assignment? It takes a lot of work and, you know, I'm doing like, hey, I'm pretty proper, right? So I've seen some that are way off and some that are really accurate. But I was reading through, kind of, they have a, a job, I'm thinking, right now. And the requirements are to have, must be a licensed appraiser, the state of Illinois, get the rest certification as a certified Illinois assessing officer. I just did a brief review of the three that are on a board and, and neither, or none of the three are licensed appraisers. So I don't know, not trying to throw shade, but they have a very tough job. But it seems like if we have a really good local competent appraiser, we should, I think I would like to stay in on.
And then you said those new assessed values do stick. That because we've already levied, that, that, that difference would be, have to be made out by the homeowner. Is that correct?
Yes, and it may be very small, you know, from what I, what I calculated, but.
So essentially, our tax rate would go up, right? I would be interested in what it would go from and go to.
Well.
It, because it has to be very minimal.
Yes, it is. But it's just the fact that, you know, we do, we don't know any of this information until after we do our levy.
So if I understand this, what you just expressed in the out years.
What do you mean out years? Like, it's going forward, yeah.
But if the year happens, you just lose money.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Because we levy for.
We levy for this year.
Yeah.
So we just lose it this year. So next year, they, these folks started a lower base, so we're all against it, find that out, residential. But we lose money the first year.
Yeah.
Don't be confused about that.
Money going forward as well. It's that valuation statement, same.
Well, in years former, they just shifted, you levy dollars and it gets shifted to the residential.
But.
And honestly, I.
Take them off of that property.
Right, right. You can talk about compounding that over years.
And honestly, I don't expect, I worked in every year since I've been, I found the old files where they've done it before that. So I don't expect them to stop now. And it may be the same story with Solis and Dollar General.
Well, yeah, Bridlebrook's done this just about every year.
Yes.
And I think it's fascinating that they think every year they're, I guess, they probably lose the value really. I'm not sure. Actually, I think it just comes back. Look, you, you think it's too high, so you just go for it. You don't base it on anything other than. Well, they basically could do it. But I think they win enough. You know, Bridlebrook has some.
To appeal, you don't have to have appraisal to appeal. You could just say, hey, I'm, I'm being.
I'll charge too much. Well, yeah. So I, I think we need to push forward.
This says permission to appeal the decision of the county board review. Are, are we voting to appeal or are we voting to start the process of appealing? Like, if we vote yes, does it, does it, are we guaranteed to end up appealing the decision?
Yes, I mean, that is, I mean, the only thing I could think of that could happen is, say, our, our appraisal comes in, you know, at the same amount or lower than what they are, you know.
Appraisals come in, what we want to do.
But otherwise, yes, we proceed. And that's what Mr. Funk's waiting on. And then that way, he can start getting the appraisals going.
And we're appealing because we, we believe that the properties are, are worth more. And, and I guess my question is, is why do we believe that? Because the assessor initially said so and?
Yes, the assessor initially said so. And, you know, as you know, the property values for everybody has gone up. So it wouldn't, it doesn't seem logical that the property values for everybody in this room are going to go up, but not for them as much or even lower.
Why did we lose at the county ball? Why did they just accept? I mean, frankly, I know those three, it's a big ass assessor and all agree.
Yeah.
Clearly, I don't think that they had confidence in the number of those.
Yes.
Be my guess.
And I think.
That was the assessor. Well, if they didn't have confidence in the number of them, so.
I think what Heather had said, though, when our representative was at that hearing, we didn't have anything to argue for, right? So if we had, it's like going to court, you don't have your expert witness there.
And unfortunately, they.
Why didn't we have anything?
Because we didn't get the notices of the hearing until about approximately three to two weeks before. So we did not have time.
Where did those notices go?
Where did they go? They go to the attorney and then I, I received a couple as well. And sometimes the, and sometimes the village attorney gets some too. They've just been sporadic on who's getting what. So as soon, as soon as I get anything, I send it to all the other taxing bodies and to our attorney. But.
And Max, I would ask you, I mean, do, do you feel like these people that you know on this board review know what the value of Solis should be? A sheer use of information. Sheer possession.
I can't, I can't speak to their competence. I can't speak to their competency, but from what I know, they're three residential realtors.
They are all residential realtors.
So I think to, to me, that was, you know, and again, very, that board review job, that's a very tough job.
Sure.
Very demanding, very stressful, I'm sure.
John, he does a little prohibition Diana.
That was my, that was first blush, what I, my responsibility.
Um, I have heard that channel through the board review. And I'll just leave that there.
Do we have any, an idea of how many units are at Solis and what the average rental rate is? Because you could back into a valuation pretty easily.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know how many units are at Solis? And do we know what their, what the rental rate is? Because you could back into a valuation.
I could already sign it all with rest, right? Part of the problem is they just finished the last building, so I'm not sure. Which ones are included? Which years? I mean, we could do some research and probably figure it out.
I think that just is, like, that's not our task to do.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a simple calculation to back into it that I, I'm, what my point is, it might be low on the six point nine million. So. So, so I reached out the email and our attorney did send back some information. It included for Dollar General and Bridlebrook, there were two appraisals in there, actually. And one of them was about a year old and one of them was, I forget if it was two, maybe, maybe three years old. The older one was Bridlebrook and that came back at a four point one million dollar valuation, I think.
Yes, and that is something that they used to fight previous appeals. So they were continuing to use the same one.
Right, because, yeah, so what do they take a third of the market value and then apply the tax rate, right? That's how it works.
Yeah.
So by that measure, they're actually like way overpaying. So I don't, I, I'll come back to, I wish we knew more about the appeals process and the information that they use. Because I don't think it's as simple as then getting an appraisal and saying, well, that's the number, let's divide it by three and apply the tax rate. Dollar General, I think, was the more recent one. And yeah, that's, that came back at exactly five forty. That one, that one's the one that is pretty confusing to me, honestly. Solis is the, the big question mark. Because like Max said, they've, they've had recent construction, right? And by any measure, whatever they end up with, either the prior number or the current number, it's going to be a higher assessed value than it was for the, the twenty-two taxes payable, one twenty-three.
Well, not.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I want, I want these three to pay their fair share, whatever that is. And maybe we just need more information to figure out what that is. I, I'm, I'm all for exploring more. I don't know that I'm, I'm for necessarily appealing. But if we have, if we, if we collect the information that leads us to that answer, then, then I would, I would support that. But with, without that information, I, I have a hard time.
And we, we don't have actual timeframe and, or time, time to be able to continue. We have a timeframe to when we need to.
I beg you.
To appeal. And that's what we're trying to make it within that.
But Bridlebrook has been counting that low appraisal for two or three years. I don't know who did it for him.
Well, that's the thing. And that's from two or three years. Obviously, that's.
Not licensed. But Kyle could go do appraisal for something in Atlanta. Of course, he's not licensed in Jordan. But, you know, I mean.
No, but to your point, though, like, I turned down assignments on the weekly, like, hey, will you go to Charleston, I don't know that market.
Right.
So, no, I won't because I'm not geographically competent in that area.
I don't believe, I can't remember who did it now. At one point I do, but I don't believe that Bridlebrook was the company in Champaign County. And I just personally don't believe we've done a good job protesting the last few years. And I think we need to step up our game.
I think the one thing that stands out to me in all of this is, hi Becky, by the way. Becky is at a work function and was unable to come. So she is joining us via Webex. And Becky, we're on item four under new business update, if you have that. The one thing that has, has been standing out to me that I keep coming back to is, we just had this facilities planning meeting where we are talking about millions of dollars that we are going to be, that we're going to need for buildings. And I feel very uncomfortable going back to our taxpayers and saying, I need you to shell out this extra money, when we didn't also say, we tried as hard as we could to get everything we could out of the, the commercial side of, of the taxes.
The same commercial multiplier applied to these people, applied to every commercial building in my house. Putting a lot of buildings, buildings, their own, by my own people that, that step up and pay their fair share on them every year.
Right.
And a couple of these are, are out of the area corporate entities and I don't see why they shouldn't do it. The multiplier is a multiplier, you know? Their, their buildings declining in value every year when, you know, we're up, I don't know, eight percent year over year the last couple of years in market value. It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to me that we, that we don't, that we won't protest, that we don't protest for years.
And to your point earlier, we've never, I mean, we've never had to appeal to the PTAB before because they have always ruled in favor of us. And I think that's what we thought would happen again. I know there's been some changeover. But we obviously didn't have, they come to us when it rules in favor of us and ask us for a settlement, which we have done.
Get notified in time to add a percent for the sweep. And I'd ask questions about why we get that. We notified.
Of what the hearing was.
So if the appraisals come back lower than we want them to, we likely just wouldn't proceed with the.
Yes, we don't have the evidence.
Could they appeal their own appeal? Like, if, if the appraisal comes back in there?
No, the PTAB's a fine one.
So, so you're loosely aware of this. So if an appraiser takes on this assignment, their client would be the taxing, or whoever it is, the taxing body, village or the district. Those results can only be shared with your client?
Right.
No one else. So it's not like that's going up on Zillow or, or anything like that. So.
Right.
Kind of like a client patient mentality.
Well, I mean, yeah, in that case, like I said, find out what the market value is and, and that's what this should be based on. And there shouldn't be any argument. So if we continue with our appeal based on. eh, so if we continue with our appeal based on that information, um, then, then I'd feel comfortable continuing, but, you know.
And I can tell you, Bridlebrook's using the same assessment, when we did our last, um, appraisal, it came out higher than theirs. So even with the last few years, I mean, our, in my belief, I mean, I could be wrong, it's gonna come out a lot higher than their one from two to three years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I, I started reading this thinking we were just appealing because we, we want more money and we're appealing for, just for the sake of appealing, but, um, I mean, if, if there's the evidence there, then I, I feel obviously very comfortable.
We're appealing because we're gonna lose money in year one, and we shift taxi bird to residential property owners.
Yep.
Every year after. And we owe it to our residential folks to pay a bunch of taxes here. That's right, you know, we're trying to, you know, when we talked with the village earlier this month about trying to build more of a commercial base to take some of the tax pressure off residential. Here we are, and here we are, we need, we, we need to fight this, we need to fight it vigorously, and we need to have our act together. And I'm not sure we've been vigorous, and I'm not sure we've got our act together.
You talked about the, uh, out of town nature of some of the ownership, so Dollar General says in their appeal, uh, Houston, Texas.
There you go.
And the comps that they gave.
Bridlebrook is New York, New York. So, I mean, they don't have essentially tied to the community, like you said, the.
Well, some of the employees, I mean, the employees live here, and, and that's great, but corporately, no, they've got no connection here. Or numbers, rich.
For Dollar General. Okay. All right, I feel like we have a nice thorough discussion, and the other question, great questions, thank you. Um, okay, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appeal to the Property Tax Appeal Board as presented, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Max.
Second.
Was that you, Justin?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
McCone?
Yes.
Severance?
Um, I'm gonna abstain if that's okay, just cause I didn't hear the whole entire conversation.
Thanks, Becky.
Lamb?
Yeah.
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, all right, Dr. Bangby, we're bringing on to school calendars.
Excited to.
Two years ahead.
Oh, all right, so thank you for your feedback, um, last time, so we're here to present two calendars to you this evening, they should be in your board folder. Um, and so you have draft, um, bourbon two from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so we will start with that one. Um, these were both voted on, as you can see in your, uh, board information, uh, by the staff. And so the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, and order my numbers here, fifty-four point two percent of the votes. Um, and the only real difference between this one and the other one, if you remember, is we moved the teacher institute day off of the end of the year in May. Made it an early release and moved that teacher institute day up in November, right before election day. So that was it, that was the only change, both these calendars, uh, follow University of Illinois spring break, that was a big part of our discussion last time as well. Um, so they both cover that, um, and so those were the main pieces there, and then, um, also part of the feedback, so twenty-five, twenty-six, draft bourbon one, um, the big change here, um, is having a full week off at Thanksgiving break. Um, and so that is a, that is a shift, so kind of like a fall break in November, um, a full week off, and those days are coming from the end of the school year. Um, so our last day of school will be the Friday before Memorial Day, um, pending no emergency days or snow days. Uh, if we had the learning days, those would not count, cause it would still count as attendance days. Um, but still with the goal in mind of finishing before Memorial Day is still able to be accomplished, so, um, that one had, um, seventy point six percent of the votes, so, um, about seventy percent of the staff there, so. If no questions, um, we're seeking your approval on both these calendars this evening, and Superintendent, you had asked about communication, Dr. Lee and I have talked about how to communicate out to our families about the two-year calendars.
I have one request.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, two different people have been talking to me about it, and I kind of did the same thing at first.
Yes.
So really light shade of green, that indicates according to the key, that classes begin slash resume full day attendance.
Yes.
It's only on there in August and it's only on there in January, and I had a couple of people saying those were vacation days because they have similar according to the, we now have a vacation, could we like maybe stripe them or, or maybe, I mean, do we?
It's not the same calendar that goes out to the public.
It was in more type of.
Okay.
That's.
Well, I mean, okay.
We could definitely use a different color or stroke that, yeah, no touch.
I mean, by that, so just.
Yeah, either way.
Yeah, 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 I see your thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
This, yeah, I understand.
Yes.
It's a more that way, I got it. That is not what.
I got you.
We have one.
All right, so that's.
Yeah.
Nope.
There were a handful of people last fall that reached out to me about what we call that October holiday. Um, is there any official guidance or what's the process into the name that is used?
We can call this, we can call it that, we will, Jordan Rocket Day, I mean, you can call it a fall hall.
Well, that's not the greatest. Great.
Anybody wanna move to, uh, just here, uh, okay.
So, I mean, I think.
There's no legal.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
And we don't need like any fall. Okay, any other questions?
Appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, and he would thank you to the calendar committee and the teachers voted and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was really cool to see, like, the feedback, like, what they wanted in percentage, so.
Right, yeah. I'm just really glad we were able to figure out a way to kind of give almost a pseudo fall break, but still meet their need to be within that before Memorial Day, last day.
Absolutely.
So no snow days that year.
No snow days for sure, um, and I also like the idea. Fun, really, um. I also like the idea in both calendars, the staff, um, were supportive of moving professional development into the school year instead of off the end of the day, and I feel like
I love that.
That is gaining some six-ish hours of professional development for our staff, increasing that throughout the year, which I think is.
Uh, the superintendent recommends the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six school calendars as presented, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all right, roll call, please.
Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Severance?
Yes.
McCone?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, all right, last item in new business is item six, Board of Education self-evaluation, I asked Kenny if we could have a conversation about this. So in the past, typically, we would engage IASB, a representative from IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards, to come in and guide us through a self-evaluation of how we're doing as far as a team, how well we're working together, um, kind of guide our processes, make sure that we're meeting all of the expectations that we have ourselves, as well as, as well as what others have of us. Um, that typically takes place in a closed session because it's guided by, um, IASB, by a facilitator, and it allows us to really just kind of reflect on how we've done over the last year. We don't typically do them annually, we did, um, however we can. So I am inclined to engage in a self-evaluation, but I also wanna get your thoughts on it, and if you feel like we're doing okay, we don't need a point of reflection, I, I would be okay putting it off for another year as well. So this is just kind of a, a feel out conversation, no decisions are being made. We would talk, Kenny would look at the pricing, we would bring it back here, we could have conversations about what would our goals be, what would we hope to see from this, how much would it cost?
And, and, um, now that we're a member of Luda, Luda would also be an option to help facilitate that if the board were interested. And Luda do a closed session. They can't, cause they're affiliated.
Okay, so I'm very for the, the evaluation, I'm interested in the cost. Yeah, I think.
The cost, I believe it's four or five hundred dollars.
The cost.
I think it's five hundred dollars, and now pressured, I think they have a.
Yeah.
We've got a coupon.
We do.
You know, I always tell my wife, think about how much money you'd save if you didn't use those coupons. So.
I'm sorry, what, somebody else, what do you think you said?
Well, that's why I have to speak.
That's right, that's right.
So I guess my point is that, yeah, let's engage, but do we need, and someone outside, I think if we just started with a few questions amongst ourselves, like, hey, you know.
Again, if we bring in one of these agencies, we can, we do it in closed session, and I think there's benefit.
Can you explain that, what, what allows us to do that?
So when you have a facilitator, it's part of a state organization like IASB or, or who that, um, that is covered under closed session exemptions. Um, one of the advantages that I see as far as being within closed session is that there's a lot less pressure of, um, feeling like you can't say certain things. And, eh, a lot easier to speak freely, um, just i- in ways of helping our relationships with one another. Um, I would have a very hard time bringing up concerns in public, even though I think they might be valid concerns, for fear of that being used against us as a board or used against me in some way toward other board members, um, whereas if I was in a closed session environment where it's just us, I would develop a lot, it's not you that I'm worried about, I, I trust all of you. Um, so that, that's kind of what's happening.
When's the last time we've had a self-evaluation as a board?
Uh, thank you, August twenty-one.
August twenty-two, yeah, and.
It's time.
This, this edition of the board has been almost a year or a week.
Well, that's it, like.
Yeah.
What's it, really, August twenty-one? It's time in here.
Yeah.
Twenty, okay, twenty, is that when we started, twenty-two? Okay, August twenty-two, that's.
I think that was the same night as the.
It just the same time.
Oh, it was the same night as the high school, when how.
I just don't know how we can ask people to also be reviewed, re, give review of Kenny, but also not self-reflection. I think that, that we would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we, not saying.
But we're not reviewing the.
Strong.
We're not reviewing Kenny in open session either.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with, I just think it's important we do that.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, there's always room for improvement, and, uh, I appreciate the cohesiveness of this board, and we do have disagreements, but I appreciate the conversations around those disagreements in a professional way, and like I said, I think there's always room for improvement, so this is a great tool to do that, so. Definitely like look into it. I, I guess I would, I'm verging on, well, I typically what IASB, IASB does, I'm not familiar at all with what Luda does, I, I kind of be interested in what, what the differences might be.
That's fair.
I agree. Thank you, are you good? Do you wanna add anything?
No, so I missed the beginning, this would be an independent evaluation for Kenny in closed session?
No, sorry, this is for us as a board to do a self-evaluation of our own successes and blind spots.
How we can work together better now.
No, I, I, I think that would provide, I think that would provide value, at least for me, me being a newbie too, I feel like, um, it couldn't hurt.
Thank you.
I think it's important.
It's, it sounds like Kenny can go ahead and get some more.
I'll give information for both organizations. Which one do we have, by the way? The, IASB.
Maybe Luda.
Well, it's only hundred dollars, you know.
It's a bit against.
If Luda seems like it's a more of a high value houses, if we're not in one hundred and eighty dollars.
Um, at this time, it is, uh, necessary to go into closed session, we have closed session necessary tonight for, uh, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and for the placement of individual students into the company programs and other matters relating to individual students. Are there any other reasons we need to go into closed session? Okay, um, we are not anticipating any business following closed session, so we will turn off the, uh, news feed after we adjourn. Uh, is there a motion to approve to go into closed session for those stated reasons?
Boom.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, second, sorry.
Thank you, um, roll call vote to go into closed session, please.
Severance?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McCone?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, all right, we will not conduct, uh, we do not anticipate conducting any business once we come out of closed session. Um, let's take a quick comfort break and turn over microphones and move on to the questions.